All right, everybody, this is Mr. Sneed. He has extensive experience litigating transparency laws across Pennsylvania, a former Assistant Chief Counsel for the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records. He has argued cases in the state's highest courts, advised government agencies, and trained officials on open records laws. He served as the first Assistant County Solicitor for Berks County, handling election law and data security and more. Okay, you're good.
You're up. All right, perfect. Let me see if I can get this thing. Okay, perfect.
Hello.
My name is Chad Smith. I'm an attorney. Thanks for taking time out of your weekend here to attend this event. I focus my practice in dealing with matters of governmental transparency, particularly with respect to the Pennsylvania Rights No Law as well as the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, which are kind of the two primary methods of holding governmental agencies accountable here in Pennsylvania for the most part. I view other areas as well.
If you can't hear us, I know you're going to hear your questions.
What we use to say matters, there's civil rights litigation and other things. So I've currently, I just settled some litigation with a school district involving a First Amendment issue in the middle districts part of the state related to some public participation during public meetings. I've ended up, I've written four books in the Pennsylvania Rights No Law and Sunshine Act as of yet. So the way I operate is I really enjoy questions along the way. So I'll try to pay attention to any hands I see in the camera here as we move forward, just to see whatever I can do to try to tell you about, not only these statutes, but anything about experiences with school boards and interaction with solicitors and that sort of stuff, okay? So let's get right to it. So this is me shamelessly plugging my book. This is the fourth edition of my book on the Pennsylvania Rights No Law and Sunshine Act that was published by the U.S. The Pennsylvania Sunshine Act is a statute that governs access to...
We're going to go out?
The statute of line is set, it's actually set forth in the statute itself, that it says that it is the right of the public to be present at meetings and to witness deliberation, policy formulation, and decision makings of agencies is vital to the functioning and proper function of the democratic process. That secrecy in public affairs undermines the faith of the public, the government, and the public's effectiveness in fulfilling its role in a democratic society. That's a really, really high level kind of statement right in the statute from the General Assembly, talking about why the Sunshine Act is so perfectly important here in Pennsylvania. And as lawyers like me, the other piece of it is that it signals that this statute is what's known as remedial legislation. Remedial legislation is legislation designed to cure some sort of problem in society at large, and that's what the issue is here. The, it's actually, the 1970s, when the Sunshine Act was first created here in Pennsylvania, was kind of in response to the Watergate situation that we've been in Washington D.C. And as remedial legislation, it means that the statute has to be interpreted broadly and literally in order to affect its object and promote justice. So it's an important statute. So generally, the Sunshine Act provides that all deliberation and official action must take place during open public meetings. I say open meetings, those are public meetings. There are certain exceptions, there's exceptions for executive sessions, there's for conferences, and certain board of audit or working sessions, and also this thing called information sessions that we'll talk a little bit about in more detail here. But keep in mind that deliberation and official action, those are important terms that are in the statute here. Deliberation is defined in the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as the discussion of agency business held for purposes of making a decision. So really, I kind of view that as having three different parts. One, it has to be a discussion among individuals there. It has to be of agency business, and it has to be held for the purposes of making a decision. When I say it has to be a discussion, it also has to be a discussion among a forum of the agency. So if you have a school board of nine members, five members of your school board constitutes a forum. You could have one-on-one conversations or conversations with less than a forum and could not be deliberation for purposes of the statute. The other thing I want to note too is, we talk about public meetings. You may have seen a number of meetings that are reported by the agency, which seems to be a new practice ever since COVID for the most part. But sometimes private citizens are attending public meetings and enjoy or want to record the meetings themselves, put it on their YouTube feed. They absolutely have the ability to record meetings themselves. The public has the ability to record meetings themselves under the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act and also under the First Amendment. Not, so, I want to talk a little bit about conferences here. So conferences are more like training events, right? So this would be a conference, for example, the training event you're attending right now, the events that PSBA puts forward, those are also training events, and other organizations have them as well. You cannot discuss agency business at all during a training, right? So if you have a quorum of your governing body at a training, you cannot talk about agency business at all. And there's a case on that where a township board of supervisors was at a conference, and they were discussing a proposed zoning amendment, and the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court in 1989 found that that was inconceivable, could not happen. So executive sessions. You know what, I think my slides... There have to be one second, I just want to switch my slides around here. I think I don't have, oh, this is the shorter version. Let me switch to my other slides here real quick. And while I do that, I will, I'll vent in the meantime. So the, the... Other issue is official action and agency business. Those are terms that are defined within the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Official action is a, it's really one of four things. It is a recommendation of made by an agency personnel pursuant to a statute and ordinance or an executive order. Or it's the establishment of policy by an agency. Third, it is the decision on agency business made by an agency, which is kind of a little bit of a word salad to a certain extent. And it's also the, it's also the vote taken by any agency on a motion, proposal, or resolution rule, right, regulation, ordinance, report, or order. So it's really, that's what's really broad about this definition of official action here under the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, is that it broadly has that as any vote whatsoever. So what does that really mean? Let me, let me give you an example. So an agency, I'm not sure if this is working or not, but an agency at one point had a vote on its public meeting agenda to approve meeting minutes. And because it was on the agenda listed for approval, there was a motion made and a vote to approve those minutes. And so we argued that that is official action, such that it had to be approved during a public meeting. So agency business, agency business is pretty broad too. It is set forth here as a framing preparation, making or enactment of laws, policies or regulations, creation of liability by contract or otherwise, or the adjudication of rights, duties, responsibilities, not including administrative action. So that really is, once again, a very broad definition. So when you're talking about, for example, there's a case right now involving the establishment of kind of communication protocols, right? So how members of the school board communicate with each other, communicate with the public, communicate with the superintendent? There's a question about whether that's agency business. I would argue that it is. The agency is arguing that it's not. They're arguing that it's not an official policy or it's not an official regulation or creation of liability. But because it involves the agency activity, I argue that it's agency business and therefore it does have to refer during an open public meeting. So in the context of municipal law, there's cases saying that a zoning hearing board's officers' decision, for example, that's announced during a public meeting, that has to occur in public. But the actual written decision that is made later on and sent to the parties, that did not actually have to occur during a public meeting. So there's kind of a difference between when that, what is the official action we're talking about? And the really most instructive case is Morning Call versus Board of School Directors of South Lehigh School District. That's a case where the Commonwealth Court in 1994 was dealing with a situation where you had a Board of School Directors meeting during an executive session to discuss who they wanted to have as superintendent. They had a list of candidates, and during that executive session, the Board of, the School Directors decided to winow down which candidates they wanted to move forward with and which candidates they no longer wanted to pursue. And the Sunshine Act, and then later, following that executive session, the Board eventually then appointed a hired superintendent. The Morning Call filed a Sunshine Act challenge, arguing that that discussion during the executive session, that vote during the executive session to winow down the candidates informal was a vote, official action, that had to refer during a public meeting. The Commonwealth Court disagreed. The Commonwealth Court found that that was an informal vote. It was a straw vote that did not have to refer in a public meeting because it didn't actually commit the agency to any particular course of conduct. So that's the magic kind of phrase, "course of conduct." Does this particular item commit the agency to a course of conduct? And in that case, they found that it did not. What actually committed the agency to a course of conduct was the official vote later on to appoint a superintendent during a public meeting. So public notice, so public notice, the statute, the Sunshine Act, provides that all agencies have to give notice of all their meetings. Typically, that's done at the beginning of the year. If you're a school district, your first day of your year might be July 1st typically. But just bug story wise, the publication has to be in a newspaper, general circulation. That's kind of a magic phrase. A newspaper of general circulation, more and more agencies are shifting towards the merchandiser or other cheaper, less expensive publications than they are from the more traditional newspapers like the Patriot News or the Morning Call or the Reading Eagle, something along those lines. So that's something to keep in mind. You also have to, if you're giving, if you're going to hold a special meeting, right? So typically, you have a calendar where you are advertising all of your meetings throughout the year, right? You're going to have your committee meetings, you're going to have your regular committee of the whole meetings, you're going to have your full school board meetings, advertise all at once. But sometimes you want to hold a special meeting, right? A special meeting is just a meeting that, for any reason, that you just want to have scheduled at a different time. You want to talk about something in more detail. You have to give at least 24 hours of public notice, advertise public notice, in order for that to occur. It has to be published again. And under the new revision to the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, you also have to publish that on your website as well, if you have a website. Meeting minutes, meeting minutes, a lot of discussion among agency officials, especially newly elected agency officials, about what do minutes look like? Well, minutes under the Sunshine Act are very, very generic, right? All it says, it just has to have the date, time, place of the meeting, names of the individuals and the agency that were there, the substance of all the official actions, a record of the votes taken, and then the names of all citizens who appeared, and the subject of the testimony. That's it. It's very bare bones. I've had a situation where individuals have said, "You know what, your minutes are too bare bones. It doesn't really capture what's, what's actually happening at the meetings." And so what we did is we actually had transcribed one time. We had a meeting minutes that were probably 50 pages long. And we had the opposite complaint, which was, "Well, your meeting minutes are too long. How can I sort through this? It captures everything. That's too much." So there's really no right or wrong answer in terms of what your meetings look like, your meeting minutes look like. But this is statutory, the bare bones that's required. You really don't have to have more than that. Typically, agencies like to provide a little bit more information, just as if there's kind of some historical knowledge that you can look back on and say, "Oh, that's kind of the rationale for why we did what we did," back that. Meeting minutes be closed to the public. This is really where a lot of litigation occurs under the Sunshine Act. You can have it during executive sessions, conferences, working sessions. Working sessions, that's a phrase that a lot of times folks in school districts will use as, as kind of a, "Oh, well, we set a working session." The Sunshine Act defines that as only applying to boards and auditors only. So it's, you can't have a, put up a working session for purposes of this, this issue here. I'm in litigation right now over whether a retreat, that's the magic phrase, is a, is a meeting that was required to occur during a public meeting. The argument from the other side is that, "Well, no, it's really more of a working session." But again, it doesn't really apply to anyone else other than a board of auditors. Information sessions is kind of a magic phrase here. So information sessions, that phrase is not here in the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act whatsoever. It was created by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court in 2023 in the Smith versus Township of Richmond case. And in that case, the Supreme Court said, "You are allowed as a governmental agency to receive information for purposes of doing your jobs as a government agency." As long as you are not, and you can do that in private, as long as you are not talking amongst each other, you're not deliberating among your agency members. So the court has said that essentially there'd be a violation if agency members were weighing the pros and cons of various options on a particular proposal or based on the information they received. But what can happen is during an information session, one member of the board can ask questions to whoever is providing the information. It's just that the board members can't talk amongst themselves. Once they talk amongst themselves, that's when you're getting into deliberations. And as we discussed earlier, deliberations have to occur during a public meeting. But executive sessions are set forth in the statute here. So executive sessions are closed-door meetings that agencies can use to discuss certain sensitive matters that they don't have to do so in public. And it's not everything, it's not a grab bag of all things. We can't just talk about a contract that we're interested in, or whether to go with the contract or not. It's only certain particular topics, right? So personnel and labor, right? So if you're talking about, "Hey, we're going to hire a new superintendent, and we want to talk about the terms, conditions of his employment, what kind of benefits he's going to get, et cetera." That's one of the things there that you can talk about in an executive session. You can talk about buying or selling property. Real property is land or buildings. You can talk about litigation. You can talk with your attorney about litigation matters. And we'll talk a little bit about what that procedure looks like here. You can also talk about public safety issues, right? So if you're talking about where we're going to place cameras, who we're going to, like, how we're going to make contract potentially with a security firm, they're going to be stationed at these different locations, whatever. All that is the type of stuff that you can talk about during a closed-door executive session. The public still gets to know that you held an executive session. So the Sunshine Act requires that either immediately before or immediately after you hold that executive session, the agency must announce that an executive session occurred. And it also must provide the reasons for holding the executive session. Now, you can't just go back to a previous slide here and say, "Oh, well, we had an executive session to discuss real potential litigation." That's not enough. There's got to be some specificity involved when it comes to the announcement of what the reason is for the executive session. So the leading case on that is the Reading Eagle versus the City of Reading. In that particular case, the City of Reading held an executive session and said, "We're going to go into executive session to discuss litigation." And City of Reading, or the Reading Eagle took its legal challenge, went all the way up to the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court. Commonwealth Court said, "That's not enough. You've got to give some detail in terms of what was the case name? What was the docket number? Something more than just repeating what the statutory language is." And then while there's been really no case law on this particular piece of it, I think the same would apply to personnel issues or real property or potential some public safety things. You can't just say what's in the statute. The Commonwealth Court found that you really need to provide some detail about why you held an executive session so that the public can evaluate when you did it properly.
Can you give us an example of that more?
When is a meeting not a meeting, right? So a meeting is not a meeting when one is discussion about, among less than a forum, right? So if you've got nine board members and four board members are talking, you don't have a forum.
So can you hear me, Chadwick?
I can hear you, yeah.
Perfect, okay. So if I stand at the laptop, you can hear me. Someone asked a question, give her the microphone. You won't be able to hear it, but I'll repeat it.
Thank you.
But before we go to that question, I'm going to ask the question. The example you gave on the executive session, talking about and reading out personnel prior to making the final decision, which has to be done in public for a superintendent, and taking those straw votes. Can you take other straw votes inside of executive sessions, say, on policies or on subjects or on the agenda in an executive session and straw vote the public or the board?
Yeah, so, good question. So the Sunshine Act provides that you can talk about any of those things during an executive session, but the official vote, any action arising from it, has to refer during a public meeting.
But can you, can you vote during executive session first?
I think you can, you can determine where you're going. I think you can kind of vote, I'll use lowercase vote with quotation marks there, in an executive session.
You are a lawyer, wait a second. Lowercase.
What's that?
I said you are a lawyer, lowercase vote.
Lowercase vote, I was doing there quotation marks as well, right?
Straw vote.
You can straw vote, I would say, in the executive session to determine where, where you're headed in a direction. But if once it actually results in, "We're going to do X, Y, or Z", that has to refer during a public meeting. So more than, so for example...
So if they get the straw vote that, "Hey, five of us like this idea", can they then go outside and then just redo it? That's kind of the idea?
Yeah, so let's say we're in executive session talking about whether to sue David Bradley for, for, for whatever reason, right? And, you know...
Wait, that's litigation. I'm not talking litigation, I'm not talking personnel, I'm not talking buying property. I'm talking about standard business that normally would be done in public, but we don't want to go out there until we're all unified. Let's unify first.
How about appointing Dave Bradley to a vacancy on the school board? Are we ready to advance it?
He can hear you.
But there's a good example.
I can hear that. So with that, let's talk about informing Dave Bradley to the school board, right? So if we do that, that is actually carved out in the executive session as something that cannot be discussed during an executive session. Appointing a member of your agency to the board cannot refer during an executive session, cannot be discussed. There can be no straw vote, nothing. And I think, I think what Dave, you're suggesting is, can, can you have a discussion informally during an executive session for a topic that's not listed as one of the reasons for holding an executive session?
Correct.
If that's the case, no.
Thank you.
However, nothing stops you, Dave, or nothing stops any agency from talking among less than a forum outside of an executive session about whatever, because you don't have a forum there.
So the idea was, and one of the ones, we're going to get to you in one second.
That's fine.
One of the things that occurred in an executive session was basically the solicitor was lobbying the board to adopt a new policy to be able to go after certain landowners for more taxes and have them reassessed, which breeds, which breeds more work for the solicitor. That should have been done in, in public, not in the executive session. The solicitor cannot go into the public, cannot go into an executive session and lobby the entire board as to what he wants to do or not wants to do.
Hey, in my opinion, in that case, you know, you can just talk about potential litigation. That would be potential litigation in that part. But I think whenever you're initiating litigation as an agency, I feel like that has to happen in an executive session unless there's some explicit authorization delegating that authority to the superintendent or whatever. And, you know, I have litigation right now with the Commonwealth Court where it was actually related to masking. And the, the school district then filed a cross-appeal to the Commonwealth Court from a decision that was issued by a trial court. And my argument in bringing, actually bringing litigation related to it was that that cross-appeal, that decision to file an appeal to the Commonwealth Court was itself something that needed to occur in a public meeting, would not be authorized during an executive session.
Nice. Okay, hold on, she had a question, go ahead.
Well, my question, if you can hear this, was in, you're saying that there needs to be some specificity, or however, whatever the word would be, in the announcement of holding the executive session either prior or af... Well, obviously, it would be prior too, otherwise you wouldn't be announcing it. So anyway, well, no, I guess you could announce that we'll be having an executive session after in regards to. You're saying there needs to be specific details. What would an example of that be? Because generally, ours is like a student matter, a personnel matter. They don't, like, what are you talking specific?
So she's asking an example of using the requirement of specificity for an executive session. And before you go down that path for just one second, if the board decides we're going to have an executive session, that's an official action. We're leaving for executive session. That's an official action. And prior to that official action to leave, the public has to be given the right to comment on the fact that they're going to go to that executive session. Therefore, they have to know at least something of the subject matter. So how specific do they have to get? And is that accurate? That before they leave for executive session, they have to have a second or additional public comment section prior to taking the vote to go to executive session? Because leaving for executive session would be considered an official action, and that goes under seven, ten.
It's an interesting question. I, there's absolutely no case law on that whatsoever, that I'm aware of. It would be official action. You are during a public meeting saying, "We are going to reset an executive session." The statute just says you have to announce that you did or that you aren't. So it doesn't really say anything about procedurally whether you need to have public comment allowed for going into executive session. So the interesting question, I think that's one that potentially could be litigated moving forward. But in terms of how specific do you have to be? That's always a very tough question, right? And I have to give you a lawyer's answer, which is, you know, maybe, right? I make my money in shades of gray. The, you have to provide some detail, right? It doesn't have to be exhaustive. So the easiest one is, is the litigation. So essentially, if you said, "Our case is Reading Eagle versus..." We went, we met in executive session to discuss City of Reading versus Reading Eagle, docket number 24-175, period. That would be enough specificity, right? If you said, "We're going into executive session to discuss various candidates to potentially hire as superintendent", I think that's enough specificity. If you're talking about terminating employees, you know, you could, I think you have some specificity there too. You talked, we went to executive session to talk about terminating particular employees, or maybe you identified by personnel number. Do you have to give the name? Do you have to give a personnel number? I think there's very little case law that tells you one way or another. At some point, there is a gradient about how much specificity, how much detail you need to provide. And really, the only way you're going to know is the judge tells you you're right or you're wrong. And really, the only way you're gonna know is the judge tells you you're right or you're wrong. So, let me continue on, unless there's any other questions here. One's going twice. I wanna talk a little bit about reply all. So, we've been talking about meetings as the old-fashioned kind of a thing, where you're sitting in a room together and you're discussing business.
Hold on one second. We didn't answer the question from the other guy asking, can you go in, can you discuss who you want to appoint in the executive session?
Oh, you cannot, you absolutely cannot.
To fill a void.
Right, so, you're talking, you absolutely cannot go into executive session at all to discuss particular candidates to appoint to fill a vacancy on a school board. That's point-blank, absolutely can't do that. That's in the statute.
Thank you.
So, emails, right? So, one of the things that's a little tricky, especially with school boards, is unlike a township or a borough or a county or some other level of government, you're not typically issued cell phones for conducting school district businesses, right? You're not even paid, for food's sake. So, when it comes to emails, you're typically using your personal device to send emails maybe on your work account, or maybe on your school district issued account, maybe on your personal account. Text messages, there's text messages, they might be on, you know, your cell phone. You know, they're your personal cell phone, it's not your agency-issued cell phone. If you start sending emails among a quorum about a particular proposal, you might wanna build a new elementary school, and you send that among a quorum of your school board, that could be a meeting, because you are essentially engaging in deliberation via email or text messages. And if you're presenting that kind of a question to a quorum for discussion for deliberation, they could be not only public records, but also potentially a violation of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as well. It's, there was just a hearing in the Senate Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee the other day, where I attended, that was talking about Signal messages, group chats on Signal. Those are, that's a disappearing messaging application that some agencies are using to, in my opinion, kind of circumvent the transparency issues under the rights of the law of Sunshine Act, but also record retention requirements as well. But I think for purposes of this, those would be potential evidence of deliberations, and of potential records that would be public, under the Pennsylvania Right to Know Law. Public comments, every meeting you have to allow for public comments. Absolutely do. You have to allow for an opportunity for public comment prior to taking any official action. I say prior to voting here, but it's any official action, you have to allow an opportunity for public to make some comments out there. There's also a section within the Sunshine Act that allows for objections. It specifically says that there is a right to raise an objection at any time if we perceive Sunshine Act violation. You don't have to. You certainly, there's no harm in not raising an objection during a meeting. And quite frankly, there's no real benefit in terms of litigation about raising the Sunshine Act an objection, except for the fact that you can kind of help prove a willfulness, a willful disregard of the Sunshine Act. If you raised an objection, they just blew you off, ignored you. The, it's, when you're dealing with the public, and maybe some of you folks here are members of the public, you might be saying things that could be considered a bit harsh, could be considered a bit personally directed towards the school board members, towards the governing body. You're absolutely allowed to do that. Under Marshall v. Newsom, under New York Times versus Sullivan, United States Supreme Court case, the public is allowed to be unpleasant, and does not have to be nice when dealing with school board members. And many times, people are not nice to school board members. But you absolutely have to allow those individuals speak. You cannot cut those individuals off because you don't like what they're saying. You can't, you have to allow them the same amount of time that anyone else has to speak. You can't interrupt them. And if you do interrupt them, you have to allow them to refund their time, the same amount of time. You can't have any kind of content-based differences, or changes, or restrictions with respect to public comments that are offered during a public meeting. Obviously, there's first amendment issues there as well. Agendas, so agendas, they have to be posted now under the new Sunshine Act amendments.
One second, sorry, one second, Chadwick. On the speaking, can a person outside the district but within the state address a school board member? And can the school board restrict their ability to provide public comment just because they don't live in the district?
Right, great question. So, the statute specifically says that a resident or taxpayer of the school district or government agency is allowed to speak during a public meeting. That's all, that's all it says. But, of course, the Sunshine Act does not define what it means to be a resident, doesn't define what it means to be a taxpayer, right? So, if I got an Airbnb, and I'm out at the Southern Tenet area school district, I resided there for the night, so I'm a resident. Maybe just for that night that I resided there. Maybe I stopped by Sheetz and I got a pack of gum. Am I a taxpayer? I pay taxes on it. They've not directed to that agency. A lot of agencies also have policies where, if you have a person that is representing a group, that person doesn't need to be a resident or a taxpayer of a particular agency in order to be able to address whatever the issue may be during public comment. So, just because I'm not a resident, you know, I live in Lancaster County, but in theory, I could go to Luzerne County, and I could rent an Airbnb, and I would have resided within Luzerne County for that evening, and therefore be able to speak.
But without even the residential portion of renting that Airbnb, the fact that you're a state taxpayer, and the school district is a governing body that accepts state money, doesn't that also make you a resident taxpayer?
It says a resident of the agency, so, or taxpayer of the agency. So, I think you have to pay taxes within that municipality, wherever you're located. But again, what used to say, if I stop at Sheetz and buy a pack of gum within the Southern Tenet area school district, am I now a taxpayer of the district? There's an argument I could be. And if I'm an agency, do I really wanna stop someone from being able to speak when they're making an argument, when I could potentially open my district up to first amendment issues if I do? You know, I think if you're a solicitor at that part, you say, "Just let the guy speak." You know, if he gets three minutes, he gets five minutes, whatever it is, let the person speak. Agendas, so agendas that have to be posted online at least 24 hours advance of each public meeting. Thus, we actually post it physically on the office door of where the meeting's supposed to be placed. Office is supposed to be available, conference is supposed to be available during public meetings. Agencies cannot deviate from that published agenda, except when issues are for emergency business, or the issues do not involve the expenditure of agency funds, do not involve entering into a contract, and are de minimis in nature. So, what does that mean? Here's an example. We will talk about amending agendas. There's a case where I was proud to represent now State Senator Jared Coleman, Coleman versus Parkland School District, that is currently on appeal to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. In that particular case, the school district publishes this agenda, and during the public meeting, they said, "You know what? We're gonna vote to approve a new collective bargaining agreement with our teachers' union," with absolutely no advanced public notice whatsoever. Went to the Commonwealth Court, the Commonwealth Court said, "No, you can't do that." It has to be, and that is not as, more than de minimis. So, de minimis means of little or inconsequential nature. So, it's not de minimis because it involves salaries and benefits for all teachers within the district. It is a contract or agreement, because it's an agreement with the teachers' union. And yes, it involves the expenditure of agency funds, because there was a salary increase involved in there as well. That's currently on appeal, as I said, to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. The district filed an appeal losing taxpayer money, and we're sorting that one out right now. Sunshine Act enforcement, it is very rare to try to pursue Sunshine Act violations criminally. It has happened, but it's very, very rare. So, for example, there was a former Columbia Borough manager here in Lancaster County that ended up pleading guilty to a summary offense under the Sunshine Act because he failed to post an agenda prior to a public meeting. The problem is that it's a summary offense, it's not a misdemeanor, it's not a felony, and he paid the whopping $100 fine for violating the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Really an area that needs some revision, to beef up the penalties, in my opinion, of the General Assembly. If you believe that there is a criminal violation of the Sunshine Act, my recommendation is to do one of two things. Contact the local district attorney's office, or two, file a private criminal complaint that then has to go to the district attorney's office to be reviewed with the magistrate or district judge, arguing that a Sunshine Act violation occurred. Whether a DA actually takes any action on it is certainly a legitimate question. It's certainly a bigger fish to fry, unfortunately, than Sunshine Act issues. The other way to deal with Sunshine Act problems is civilly. And that's when you can do it yourself, or you potentially hire someone like me, and you can bring an action within the court of common pleas. You have various relief that you can get. You can get an injunction that stops them from doing whatever you're complaining that they're doing while this litigation is pending. If you can find that they willfully, or with a wanton disregard, violated the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, you can get an award of your attorney's fees and court costs as well. You can potentially get a current injunction. And I think more than that, it's not set forth in the statute, but you're giving kind of a black eye to the district because they, to whatever the agency is that violated it, because they didn't comply with the law. And there's some kind of media outrage, public outrage for not complying with the statute. The tricky, tricky, tricky part is that the statute of limitations under the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act is very, very, very short. It's 30 days. So, there is a statute of reposed that says it's also 30 days from the discovery of when a private closed-door meeting occurred, but generally, it's 30 days. And there are ways to hold the statute of limitations by filing a writ, as opposed to a full-blown complaint. Makes it a little bit easier to get a filing in before the clock runs out. But it's a very quick turnaround. The other thing that's tricky is that agencies can cure Sunshine Act violations. So, even if an agency messes up and violates the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, the way they can fix that issue, quote-unquote, is to, at another meeting down the road, vote again on whatever the issue is, and do it right this time. Do it, list it on the agenda, do it properly, fix whatever the issue is that occurred. If that happens, you have folks like me that would argue that, "Well, wait a minute. The court should still hear this case because it falls within what's known as an exception to the move this document." Because it's capable of happening again and not being seen by the court. It involves matters of public interest, because going back to that definition we talked about earlier, you know, the right of the public to witness in decision-making and deliberations is huge. It's critically important for the public's role, fulfilling its role in the democratic society. And it's also potentially might impact the actual individual litigants in the case. So, there are ways of still having Sunshine Act issues heard and addressed, even though it's technically moved because of the agency voting, again, to, you know, fix the issue. So, again, the Sunshine Act, it's really kind of designed to give some public pressure. It's not a perfect statute. I think, in my opinion, it requires a little bit more teeth. But it is a, something that agencies fear because there are potential criminal penalties, at least, and it is something that can cause a very big black eye to school districts. So, the other statute we talked about, and I know we're approaching kind of the end of our time, is the Pennsylvania Right to Know Law. This deals with public records. Sunshine Act deals with open meetings, Right to Know Law deals with public records, open records. All agencies, all records of an agency are presumptively subject to public access. Some contractor records might be accessible. There's a section known as 506D of the Right to Know Law that talks about having to obtain records from a third-party contractor and provide them a response to a Right to Know Law request. Emails, text messages, memos, letters, smoke signals, all those are potentially records subject to public access. And that's because the definition of a record is very, very broad. It is information that documents a transaction or activity that has retained, maintained, or controlled by the agency in connection with that agency activity. It's a very, very broad definition. Our text messages sent on a personal device, you know, if you're a school board director, you're probably using your personal cell phone. You likely don't have a separate one. Potentially, yes, the agency might have to retrieve those messages. So, you know, it might, what's tricky about this is, years ago, when email first started becoming more prevalent among government agencies, people would be a little more informal with emails until they started realizing that, "Oh, you know what? These could be public, or probably people can see these." There's a little more formality, I think, with most emails nowadays. Text messages, people tend to be a lot more informal on text messages. That's a very bad idea, because, you know, you potentially could have some exchange that you really do not want to appear on the front page of your local newspaper that is gonna be potentially subject to public access if you're texting about agency business. I think that's the scariest part, if I'm an agency official, is that if you have some messages that you don't want out there, and you're creating a record potentially by texting back and forth with your colleagues on whatever that issue might be. So, the Right to Know Law, generally, agencies have to respond within five business days of receiving a Right to Know Law request. They can deny access to records. And the statute itself sets forth 30 different statutes for reasons for denying access. But there's other ones. You know, the request might not be specific enough. It might be subject to another statutory law out there that makes it not public. It might be subject to a privilege, like the attorney-client privilege, speech and debate, something along those lines. Most appeals typically go to a governmental agency that was created with the statute, called the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records, where I used to work way back when. Some agencies, appeals go to the local county district attorney's office for local agencies when it involves access to criminal investigative records. A little bit of a procedural quirk there. Once those appeals are filed, the agency has to be, sorry, the open records office or the appeals officer has 30 days to issue a final determination, a final order in writing that either grants, denies, or dismisses the appeal.
I'll give you a question.
As a school board member, and asking for information that the attorney may have given the board president, do all the board members have a right to know all that information?
Well, let's start from the beginning on that one. Can you hear us okay, Chadwick?
I can hear you, I didn't hear the question.
So, the question was, and I'm gonna rephrase it a little bit. The first question is, if the solicitor gives some information to one board member, do the other eight board members have a right to see it without having to file a right to know?
Oh, really good question. So, that's, this is an interesting dynamic, right? So, when you have an agency solicitor, the solicitor is not representing any one member of the body. They are representing the board itself, the entire board. They really cannot withhold information to the rest of the board because the representation is to the board, it is not to individual members of the board. So, there is a one-on-one...
Hold on, one... If the board tries to curtail individual directors from discussing matters with the solicitor, funneling them all through the president only, that is a policy that the board has to fix. Otherwise, they just abdicate their authority to the president, correct?
I agree. I mean, I think that's only permissible if the board lets it be permissible, right? So, if the board has a policy or practice procedure that they've adopted that says, "That's the way we're gonna do things," so be it. But if they haven't, that really needs to be spelled out and set forth. It is a power that the, your board can take back, and say, "When there's communication with the solicitor, it's gotta go to everybody."
Can individual director, if they don't have the majority, what would be the procedure for an individual director to gain access to solicitor communications?
Yeah, so, that's, I mean, that's tough. Because if you have a majority, things are great. You can change the rules however you want to be, how the procedure or practice goes. When you're dealing with, when you have a minority, you cannot legislatively necessarily fix things. But if you're being excluded as a board member... But if you're being excluded as a board member from various decisions or discussions, I think there's an argument that you might have legal recourse to potentially sue your own school district, I hate to say it.
I did it. I did it regularly.
Yeah, in order for you to fulfill your role as a school board director, if the school board is preventing you from doing that by excluding you from communications, that might be your recourse.
Right, a policy without you.
And you take them, you stick them out, it's just under the court, you take them to court on the county level.
But he said "policy."
Oh, you had to make your own policy. So, back up. Just to make sure I explained it right. If your board has already gone down the path of alienating portions of the directors from communications from the solicitor, if you put it in writing that you want them, the board has to give them to you. If they do not, they're obstructing your right as an individual director to information prior to you making a decision. Therefore, that information has to be provided, and that's a court, you either take them to court and get a mandamus, or you take them to court to go get the information. You might have to stand up to them. You also can go to the district attorney and say they're using official abuse of power preventing you. The DA is going to laugh, but still, he has to shoot it across the bow, and everybody has to see it, so you're publicly shaming them, like you said before. But access to the solicitor should be unilateral. Every response, every question from a director should go to the solicitor, and the response from the solicitor should go to every director, not just the individual that asked the question. Right, and I think you've got a bit of a bowling point there, too, that, you know, you have public board meetings where you can point out, "Hi, I'm a school board director. I understand there were some communications about X, Y, and Z topic. I've not received any of those, and I want to know why I'm being excluded." Yeah? Bring it up, I have to do an excellent meeting.
Okay. Your question was, can you force them, it's only through the court, if they want to be...
I did a Right to Know request, mine is not.
Is there any reason a director should ever do a Right to Know request?
Yeah, that's really tough. The Right to Know Law is, the question is not whether you as a school board director should be entitled to access the document. The question is whether the public at large is entitled to access the document. So, if a document is privileged, go ahead.
If a director has the lawful authority and duty to inspect all these records of wide oversight, they have access to all the records, they shouldn't even have to ask.
Right, and what I'm saying is under the Right to Know Law, you're not going to be successful because if it's privileged to the public at large, it doesn't matter whether you're a school board member or a Joe Blow citizen, you're not going to get access to it. It's under the Right to Know Law. You should have the ability to access it as a school board director. But under the Right to Know, that doesn't exist.
As a public citizen, does public, let's, I'm going back to the texting thing you were talking about. Does public citizen Chris have the ability to do a Right to Know for texts amongst school board directors or administrators, or between the school board and the administrator?
So, the question was, can an individual citizen do a Right to Know to see the text messages that directors are giving either in and amongst themselves and/or between them and their solicitor?
Yes. Yes, I think the answer to both is yes. So, individual citizens, individual school board directors can do this, too. Anyone has the ability to file a Right to Know Law request for text messages among school board members, school board members and officials. You can file a Right to Know Law request for text messages, emails between the solicitor and school board members. You might be less successful there because you might have issues with the attorney-plant privilege, for example, depending on what the topic might be. But yes, anybody can do that. There is an exception for certain kinds of records. I'll just skip ahead a little bit here. One of those exceptions is for internal pre-decisional deliberative records. So, it's set forth in Section 708B10 of the Right to Know Law that if you have a record that is internal to the agency, that is prior to a decision being made, and it is deliberative in nature, then that can be withheld from public access with respect to the Pennsylvania Right to Know Law. However, if it's a communication among a quorum, as we talked about earlier, that is an exception to the Right to Know Law. It might be public if it's presented to a quorum for deliberation. If there's governmental contract involved, this exception doesn't apply. So, let's talk about your solicitor example a little bit here. Your solicitor's technically a contractor, so this exemption might not apply, but your attorney-plant privilege might. What I always recommend is if you're doing kind of like a fishing expedition in terms of emails and text messages, that sort of thing, I always recommend, like you say, I want all text messages within, between this school board director and the superintendent, right? If you don't have any subject matter whatsoever, I always recommend limiting your timeframe to a 30-day period of time, because there's some case law out there saying that 30 days is a sufficiently short period of time that they can still find records and provide them when it comes to the Right to Know Law. It's specific enough if you identify a sender or recipient and a 30-day length of time, even without a subject matter.
I have one more. Got a question to begin. I have one question.
Let me just flip through a little bit here. So, yeah, appeals that there's...
One more question, sorry, go ahead.
If there's five board members on an email that they chose the solicitor, is that deliberation?
So, if they have an email, if they have an email meeting, five, a quorum of directors are on an email deciding who their solicitor's going to be, is that a Sunshine Act violation?
Yes.
And then the path forward...
I got it, I got it.
Hold on, I got it. So, the path forward is to hire a Chadwick, you know, stick it to him. And one more question.
I need to use one.
All right, so, I don't want, and Ray's pushing me here, but you got to, so you've got to work the book, right? So, if you, one of the questions we get regularly is, they have a, content is provided to a director in executive session, they have every right to use that content without disclosing specific people, things, or whatever, to talk to their constituents about what they should do. So, hey, we have a teacher, I'm not going to tell you the name, he got caught doing X, Y, Z, what do you think I should do? Well, I didn't hear about it in the meeting while it was executive session, but I still want to know what your opinion is. You've got a lot of expertise in this realm. You know, dear constituent A, what do you think, I got this teacher that got caught doing this, what do you think we should do? They have every right to discuss that in private and public, even though the information was, the basic information was given during the executive session.
No, I mean, there's really, there's no, it's a funny situation, because there's really no statute or rule that prevents anyone from disclosing what occurred during executive session. And what happens if the public official says, let's say they say the name of the teacher, what's the penalty against that solicitor for disclosing information that came up during executive session? There's none. You know, the person can't be removed from office unless they're impeached by the General Assembly and then subject to removal by the Senate. I mean, that's a very, very high bar, where there's a county commissioner that was accused of sexually harassing a bunch of female subordinates, and that person didn't reach that threshold. Wasn't removed, wasn't impeached by the House. So, you know, yeah, I mean, there's really, there's really nothing an agency can do. The other piece of it as well that I would think about is, there's a new statute that just came into effect about a year ago maybe, called the Anti-SLAP statute. SLAP stands for Strategic Litigation Against Public Participation. It is a statute that I've now used at least once, where a agency, like, we don't like what this person said, so we're going to sue him and stop him from doing whatever he's doing. We don't like that he's posting on Facebook, we don't like his comments, we don't like his attacks, we don't like his disclosure of information during an executive session, right? If someone brings litigation, that statute provides that you can immediately get that case dismissed and get all of your attorney fees and court costs. The case dies right away if you are bringing that allegation that they are violating this new Anti-SLAP statute. And it also gives that person a clause of action to sue the district in this case if there's any kind of litigation brought. So, yeah, there's really nothing that stops it.
Arvin, anybody else? We keep going there, Chadwick, I think we're finishing up.
I think you only have one more slide left, so we'll let you wrap up and then we'll call it be ended.
Fair enough, yeah. So, I've given these slides, so you can upload them and share them with whoever wants to see them. I just want to say, yeah, there's Right to Know Law, there's also an appeal process, there's also enforcement when it comes to the Right to Know Law. If you get a bad decision from the open records office, you can ask for reconsideration. You have to do so within 15 calendar days. If you're dealing with a local agency, you can file an appeal to the court of common pleas. If you do that, you can potentially file a fervent appeal up to the Commonwealth Court, potentially also to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. Deal with the Commonwealth agency, you go straight to the Commonwealth Court, and then you go straight to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court after that. What happens if you get a decision from the open records office that says, "Yes, you have to provide all the records," and the agency doesn't comply? Well, you've got an action there in mandamus. You can bring a civil action to enforce a final order from the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records through a mandamus action against the agency for failing to comply. So, that's it in kind of a nutshell. I know we did some questions along the way, which is great. Have to answer any more if anyone has any questions here. I know I'm running short on time.
Everybody else? Do you have a question? Three's got a question. Hold on, we got one more question for you.
Two, actually, just ahead.
Two, two or three now.
I'm going to word this like a hypothetical. So, hypothetically, if the school, the administration is putting in programs that cost money saying there's a huge bullying problem, a single board director requests, I guess, additional information about the bullying that's occurring, like, we do get a list of how many occurrences, one, two, we get a little tick list, three occurrences, four occurrences, but the individual board director requests more detailed information, maybe with redacted names, but desiring to know the nature or the nuances of the bullying, because there is a difference between like an 11th grader saying the N-word and smashing a kid's head in versus a 3rd grader saying, "Well, your skin color is different from mine, so you can't sit at my lunch table." You know what I mean? So...
So, the question is, the question she's asking is, let me see if I can paraphrase this properly, multiple times. The best way to describe it is, how does a school director gain access to the reports and information that are provided to the administration regarding bullying, harassment, or issues within the school? They have an oversight responsibility. How do they gain access to it if the administration has stonewalled?
They won't give it, and the rest of the board says, "Don't give it to her."
And the rest of the board is saying, "Don't give it to her." We're back to the...
Yeah.
Okay. Look, go ahead, answer your question.
I always say there's two, yeah, I think there's two ways, right? One is, if you have a majority, great. You have a majority vote to say, "Hey, we need whatever we need to get access to," right? If you have a majority vote at a public meeting and your superintendent says no, or your administration says no, I mean, I think that you've got a breach of that superintendent's contract, you're not complying with what the board is. These votes work for the board, and the board works for people, so that's an issue.
She doesn't have board majority.
You don't have that. I was going to say, if you don't have board majority, then I think your next action is potentially civil litigation, right? Because you are trying to fulfill your duties as a school board director. And so, if you're not getting access to the information that you need in order to perform your duties as a school board director, you might have some sort of mandamus-type action where you have to force them in court to give you the information to me. That's not a fun or pleasant answer, unfortunately, but it might be the path forward.
Or the answer to that as well, which is easier, get 10 of your citizens and try to remove the five, the breach of Pennsylvania School Code that's preventing you from doing your job, and that'll run, that gives you the shame factor, and it's cheap. If you want to weaponize the world...
Or you could just call Chadwick.
That works, too. Yeah, so, removal of school board directors is tough, right? It's not for bad decisions, it's for failing to perform something that they have to perform. So, I think that is an argument to be made, that like, hey, if they've got a statutory duty to allow you access to see this information, it's a real problem when they don't, and that potentially that would be a basis for removal.
One more question.
I know we're running late here, I'll be quick. It's regarding a Right to Know where your personal device is concerned. How is that actually enforced? Is it a request made to you as an individual to please surrender your device? Do they go to your ISP, or do you just get to say, "I don't have anything," and have a nice day?
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I did. Unfortunately, it's more of the latter, I have to say. So, the statute says that the open records officer, that's the person that's responsible for receiving Right to Know Law requests and fulfilling Right to Know requests, is, has a duty to inquire of you as to whether you have any responsive records. So, that inquiry might just be, "Hey, Bob, do you have any text messages related to building that new school building?" And you write back, "No." Hopefully, you're being truthful. If you get to the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records, there is a burden of proof that the agency has to demonstrate that either all records are provided, or that no records exist, or that the reasons for denying access are appropriate. So, it's unfortunately a, it's just an inquiry, it's just a question to you, and hopefully you're honest in your duties in responding back to that inquiry.
But how do you confirm a negative thing? "No, I don't have them." How does that...
Yeah, yeah, that's great. So, there's a, I'm very proud of this, actually. There's a case, Hodges versus Pennsylvania Department of Corrections. It was an unreported case, I got the Commonwealth Court to report it. That's important to me because it means a binding precedent that has to be followed throughout the entire Commonwealth. Agencies bear the burden of proving the negative, of proving that records do not exist. So, the way they do that is typically the open records office proceedings, it's all done on paper. So, it's typically just an attestation, an affidavit, it's a statement that says, "I, Bob Smith, under penalty of perjury and school board director, I was asked for these particular records. I searched my personal device, I looked everywhere I thought they should be, I looked at my files, I couldn't locate any based on my search, and therefore, it's my conclusion that no responsive records exist." So, something along those lines, right? Now, and it's under penalty of perjury, so if you are perjuring yourself, there's potential criminal prosecution that occur, that could occur. But yeah, it's typically done that way.
But Chad, I'm sorry, so, if they go down that path and he signs that, the only way they're going to be able to grab his phone is through a subpoena, through another court action, and way higher up on the food chain, and that's the dilemma you're running into with the Signal app, correct?
It is a dilemma. So, in other agencies, what I typically do, non-school board agencies, is I typically have a personal device and a work device, so that I know that I'm doing all my work business on my work device. So, if I ever need to surrender it in terms of a litigation hold, or a subpoena, or a Right to Know Law request, I'll just give you my work phone. You got it, no problem, right? When you're dealing with school board directors that might be using your personal Gmail or your personal device to communicate, it's harder. It's much, it's much more difficult.
Tony, is your question quick?
We've got one last question.
Real quick, with the...
Sure.
With the public comment, and then going to, our school board tried doing like, taking it from two, three minutes to two minutes, and then changing it for us, you know, at the end, so we're not going to speak in the beginning on the agenda, and at the end, they, you know, they're trying to combine them two. Is that legal?
Yeah, so, there is definitely a continuum in terms of how long a public comment, each public comment is. Three minutes is typically the smallest amount of time I've ever seen. Once you start going below three minutes, I think it opens you up more and more to potential First Amendment issues because citizens aren't really allowed to speak if they allow enough time to even say what they want to say. So, there's some continuum there. I would, I always recommend at least three minutes for individuals to talk. Sometimes agencies will also limit, "We're going to have the first public comment period be a half hour, and the second public comment period is going to be 30 minutes." I've seen that, too. That's permissible, that's okay. In terms of combining those two, so, as we talked about earlier, you have to have, you have to allow an opportunity to comment... have to allow an opportunity to comment on items that are before the agency prior to taking any action on those items. So there must be one public comment period at the very beginning of the meeting because it has to be before they vote and they have all the stuff that's listed on their agenda. That second public comment, that's kind of a grab-bag free-for-all, doesn't really have to exist. You really only have to allow public comment on items that are or may be before an agency. So yes, you could have one combined public comment session, provided that it occurs at the beginning of the meeting and not at the end.
All right, well, thank you very much, Chadwick.
Thank you, glad to have you.